Let's go ahead and call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors, organizational meeting on January 9, 2024 for Mr. Stevens. You call the roll, please.
Ms. Knoll? [S02] Present.
Streisandau? [S03] Here.
McGlynn? [S04] Here.
Slarson? [S05] Here.
Mr. [S01] Here. All present. All right. Organizational meeting, 2024 meeting. All right, we'll go ahead and look for the motion to appoint a chair for this coming year.
Okay. I'd like to move that we appoint Ms. Larson's chair for the year.
Second. [S01] Second. Any others? Yeah, we don't need a second, but any others? Okay. All right. Roll call.
Ms. Knoll? [S02] Aye.
Streisandau? [S03] Aye.
Mr. McGlynn? [S04] Aye.
Ms. Larson? [S05] Aye.
Mr. Hippe? [S03] Aye.
There you are. Congratulations. [S01] Thank you very much. All right. [S01] But I need the script. Yes, ma'am.
The script.
There you go.
This one, I think. [S07] That was great. Okay, thank you.
I gave you all of them.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. With that, we do need a motion to appoint a vice chair for the coming year, or nominations.
I'll nominate Mr. Eisenhower for vice chair.
Thank you. [S07] Second. Okay.
We don't need a second.
And any others? All right, seeing none. Would you be able to do a roll call, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Knoll? [S03] Aye. Mr. Streisandau? [S03] Aye.
Mr. McGlynn? [S04] Aye.
Mr. Hippe? [S03] Aye.
Ms. Larson? [S05] Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, so we need a motion to adopt the organizational meeting resolution setting the meeting times in the associated calendar include any changes that we might have to the calendar.
Chair, I'd like to amend the rules to have our meeting time for the first meeting of the month to be at 5:00 p.m.
Okay.
I make that motion because the timing is such that I often have work responsibilities on Tuesday afternoons earlier in the month. I can do one, but not both of them prior to that. Our meetings are at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Okay, so you would not be able to get to an earlier meeting?
Right.
Okay. Is there any discussion, any further discussion about that?
No, the only thing I was thinking of, and not saying anything for your motion, was just bringing the meetings up a little bit of time and also looking at possibility of some of our other groups meeting, bringing those up a little bit. And the reason was more so for staff and staff's time. The sooner, you know, I know the 1 o'clock works real well, and we, you know, thought about it when we first did it, and would it work, would it not work? And it gives staff enough time to, you know, finish the meeting, but still get back to work and figure out everything before they go home instead of in the morning at 8:00, 8:30, when they come in having to start their day with that type of thing. Now, staff will do anything we want. It doesn't matter if we had a 9 o'clock meeting, staff is here to service and take care of everything, and they've been great about that. But I was thinking with our new staff members as they come in, our old staff members know our routine and know what we do. The new staff members, as they come in, you know, they're looking at jobs and that's what hang between this time and this time. And, you know, and staying later and all that, sometimes it stresses them out. So I was thinking, okay, we're looking at, you know, quality of life, we're looking at raises, we're looking at benefits, and I was looking at that as well to, as a possibility. So if we're good with staying at 5:00, we'll stay at 5:00, but I'd encourage us to look at the other ones coming in a littler.
I think that makes a lot of sense, especially if there are cases where we have relatively small agendas of some of those boards and commissions, and people have to sit around for a couple hours before those meetings take place. So.
But I also think that it's important that we be open for the residents of the county who work. And so if anything's on the agenda that they want to come and do the public comment, they won't be able to if they can. Even it's hard to get here at 5:00 for a lot of people.
Yeah, and we thought that at the first one, and that's one of our biggest comments we had with certain people. They said, well, we're not going to be able to make it. The thing we found is we're ending up with more than what we had before. And if somebody wants to make the meeting, they're going to make the meeting. And unless it's somebody who wants to be at every single meeting and is working. But we don't find that there's that as many that as there were before. With all the communications we have as far as texts and emails and all the multiple things, it gives us a lot of opportunities. But it sounds like we'll stay at our regular scheduled meetings that we've had in the past few years. Seems like that's the way we're heading, if I'm correct. And I'm good with that.
Mr. Stevens, could we look at the other boards and commissions moving them up to a 5 o'clock start?
If the board's supportive of that, I can certainly push on that, that that's the desire of the board from a staff side. Encourage that, and I think get most of them there.
And the other question that I, two really, one being, I know one thing that comes up for us is often, and this doesn't, maybe this is something we can work on. If we have people that are here for public hearings and then they're waiting because we're going through preseason, I don't, maybe we can look at the agenda to just see if there's any way that we might be able to tweak things. And we don't need to make that decision tonight, I don't think. And then I also had a question about, I know that some boards have gone to recording, like citizens can call in to do public comment, and if they can't make a meeting, like, you know, going back to what Ms. Knoll said, that if somebody can't make a 5 o'clock, is there a way that they can call in and they can get those comments to us? I know we've done that in the past, just with voicemails, but.
You mean to rebroadcast them?
Possibly, or even if it's part of the agenda that's put out later.
Sure. I think, again, the technology allows us, whether it's written, whether it's voicemail, we can certainly have those comments. I think Paul has done a pretty good job of trying to get what he gets sort of up to the meetings to you, so you have time between 3:00 and the 5:00 timeframe to hear them. But certainly, they can be something that is there and you have. Now, sometimes making a decision, you're supposed to receive those comments and have them coming to you before you get to the decision point. So getting them to you probably is the challenge of that.
Yeah, I'm probably not talking so much about the public hearing ones as I am just general. Like, if somebody wants to do a public comment regarding something, but just can't get here, you know, if it's a school budget, or if it's the county budget, but it's not a public hearing that night. So I don't, just something that we could maybe look at moving forward.
If the board desires us to do that, I might want to think a little more pros and cons for you of what that might bring in. I'd hate for you to have 1,000 remote comments. That's an extreme version. But the technology would certainly allow that.
Okay. Is there a motion then to adopt the organizational meeting resolution with the amended time of 5:00 for the first meeting?
Seven.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, roll call.
Ms. Knoll? [S03] Aye.
Mr. McGlynn? [S04] Aye.
Mr. Hippe? [S03] Aye.
Mr. Streisandau? [S04] Aye.
Ms. Larson? [S03] Aye.
And then you'll work on the other meetings as well. Okay. With that, can I get a motion to enter closed session for the consideration of a personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll? [S03] Aye.
Mr. McGlynn? [S04] Aye.
Mr. Hippe? [S03] Aye.
Mr. Streisandau? [S04] Aye.
Aye.